Perfect.
Wow.
That was loud. Good afternoon. Welcome to the Housing and Economic Development Committee Hearing. I am James Torrance, Chair of the Committee and Representative of the Seventh Council District. Today, the committee will hold hearings on LO 25029, Whole Block Strategies and Disposition Timelines. In attendance, I have Odette Ramos, Vice Chair of the Committee and Representative of the Fourteenth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I also have Zach Blanchard, Councilman of the Eleventh District. Sorry, no, excuse me. I have Jermaine Jones, Councilman of the Twelfth District. Also present are host of staff from the Council President's Office and the Mayor's Office. Let's begin. Bill 20, LO 250029, for the purpose of calling relevant city agencies and representatives, as well as third-party stakeholders to review and discuss the city's policies around city's whole block strategy for vacant and abandoned properties, as well as timeline around its implementation. This bill was introduced on August 18, 2025. Sponsored with Chair Torrance. Comments from the chair? I just want to say that, just blanketly say this, that this is a bold strategy, a strategy that I wholeheartedly support, especially because I have rid line communities in West Baltimore. There's an opportunity to, for us to address and redress historic discrimination, but also provide investment for communities that often weren't thought about in times like this. I say that because, and I credit Commissioner Kennedy and the Mayor's Office for this strategy and thinking it through in terms of like, you've got to go big. Often, I always tell people in government that we need to be innovative and bold, and I will say that this is both bold and innovative, and we all have to be hands-in. So tonight, I wanted to host this hearing because I wanted to just educate the public on what is whole block strategy, because I want to level set as we get deeper into the term, understanding where things are first, and what is the thing, because often we always say affordable housing this, we always talk about strategy this, but we never say what that thing is. And I think that this is an opportunity to not only educate members of this council, but educate the entire city on it, but also discuss how we can take that thing to the next level as well, and working together on it. With that being said, I will turn it over to Commissioner Kennedy.
Getting prepared in a different way than normal, so, but we're all good. Okay. Good evening, Chair and Co-Chair, as well as members of the committee. Happy to be here this evening with you to talk about 25-0029, Oversight Regarding Whole Blocks Strategy, Disposition, and Timeline. We have a number of different topics that we're going to cover with you today, just in terms of vacancy reduction, the block level planning, that site selection, priority blocks and pipelines, disposition methodologies and metrics, as well as how we do that work with community engagement and communication, and for transparency. When we talk about vacancy reduction through block level planning, one of the key things that I want to kind of highlight is that the Mayor's Reframe Baltimore strategy is a $3 billion strategy to eliminate vacancies over the next 15 years, and it is focused on creating whole block outcomes, which create whole neighborhood outcomes as well. You know, the first kind of, when we talk about block level planning and those whole block outcomes, you know, this goes back for several of us within DHCD, in the Planning Department. I can think back to a time about 15 and a half years ago, in the Phoebe Stanton Boardroom on the Planning Department A floor, where we started in the first version, what I would call that first version of whole block, block level planning, whole block planning, and what we were looking at. That has, you know, morphed and grown over the years, and here we are today, under Mayor Scott's leadership, and what we've been doing over the last, you know, four to five years, in terms of taking that block level planning to the next level, actually kind of moving in a couple of different directions, honing that skill, working with the communities on what is needed to create those whole block outcomes. And as the $3 billion Reframe Baltimore strategy has within it, it also includes components not just tied to the vacant properties, but it looks at whole block outcomes as it relates to the homeowner on the block, or the infrastructure on the block, or the vacant lot on the block, or the green space that's needed on the block, to create those whole block outcomes. So the goal of block level planning and creating those whole block outcomes is by essentially, we assign a strategy on a block level basis to every property on a target block for buildings and lots. So like I also said, this isn't just about the vacant property, this is also about homeowners, renters, landlords, vacant lots, green space, infrastructure, et cetera. And this is a holistic strategy, and that's one of the things that we have refined with Reframe Baltimore, is the holistic strategy that combines all of the divisions within the Department of Housing and Community Development, as well as our partners at the Planning Department, and other, a key partner as well in this work for creating whole block outcomes is Recreation and Parks, DOT, et cetera, for helping us create those outcomes when we look kind of as what's needed. And also, a key piece of this is preventing new vacancy and stabilizing, stabilizing our properties and rebuilding block by block. I also want to remind everybody that, you know, I think a number of you on the council have seen us previously talk about how we do some of the block level planning work, using the impact investment areas as an example. So we start with the larger geographic area of the impact investment area. Say in your mind if you can visualize Broadway East as that, and then we take the impact investment area, and then we create zones within that impact investment area, and then within those zones, there are priority blocks, because we're starting off with like Zone 1s, Zone 2s, Zone 3s, Zone 4s, Zone 5s, building off of strength, building off of assets, sometimes based on community, the community plan, or the community need at the time. It actually is not, it might not be building off of strength, it might be that we are trying to shift, shift the strength, you know, to create the strength, or to shift the feeling within a certain block or neighborhood as well. So I just want to highlight that. And that is how then we get to what we call those priority blocks, and that is so taking a larger geographic area, such as the city, now taking to a smaller geographic area, such as the impact investment areas, then going into the Zone 1s, Zone 2s, Zone 3s, Zone 4s, and then looking at those priority blocks on those blocks. We consider a whole block is defined as two sides of the street, corner to corner. So later, in the presentation, you'll, we'll see a chart that we have that goes through the number of priority blocks in each district. There might be some overlap, because there are some blocks where, you know, what you might think of as half of a block, but for us, it's a whole block outcome, or a priority block, it's both sides of the street, so it shows up in both of the district information. So, you know, the whole block outcomes and the block level planning, like I said, you know, it started off 15 years ago, first kind of looking at the work that we've done, but really, this strategy and kind of whole block strategies, whole block outcomes, whole neighborhood outcomes was also outlined in the Framework for Community Development, which has been honed and, you know, utilized as the base for the Mayor's Reframe Baltimore, and then really pushing it forward with Reframe Baltimore and the $3 billion strategy to eliminate vacancies. So I just want to also emphasize that as well, where you can see information. You know, this work leads to those whole block outcomes, and one other key piece of this is that we have to be agile in order to have effective implementation of this work. So the work that we do in community, the work that we do with our community partners, with our community development organization partners, it is dynamic, it is ever-changing, it is ever-moving, things can change, there's a private market that exists, we don't control the private market, they're entitled to the private market. Do we always agree with some of the things that happen on the private market? Absolutely not, or no. And we still have private market forces that work at different times. Sometimes those impact the plans that we have on that side, or sometimes the community, you know, plan was created, or the community master plan was created several years ago, and there have been some things that have shifted, whether or not it be economic opportunity, or a change in kind of desire, or an opportunity that has arisen, and we, as an agency, need to be able to be nimble, and we need to be able to be agile, to respond to those pieces that are outside of the city government, which is what we do when it relates to block level planning. So in terms of block level planning, to create those whole block strategies, like I said, this isn't just about the vacant property, it also is about vacant lots and homeowners. So when we do block level planning on those priority blocks, in those Zone 1s, we look at the entire block, we identify and know what is a vacant property, what is owner occupied, how long has that owner been in the property, do we think that they might, based on things that we can see, might be an older adult, do they need help through another one of our programs? Do we have, are there permits on a property already? Did a property just change hands, or just have a new deed that was recorded, and there's a new owner? Block level planning often is, you know, lots of people around a table with lots of maps and lots of laptops, because it also isn't just utilizing CodeMap, it also utilizes real property records, ESTAT, we also are looking at items in district court, as well as circuit court, we're looking at bankruptcies, we're filings, we're looking at private tax sale, lien foreclosure cases, any information that we can kind of track down to help guide what a strategy might be for a property, especially on a vacant property with a VBM. So some of the other strategies include, is this a target for demolition, is this a target for stabilization, are we, you know, doing different or enhanced type of code enforcement, or work with a landlord on a unlicensed property that we come across in block level planning. Also, looking at receivership, there are times in where we work with the communities, receivership is a tool in the toolbox, and it works pretty effectively in instances where we end up seeing the renovation of the property happen. And also, what are we doing for site assembly, what's being maintained for green space, what are the vacant lots, what's on the master plan, and how does this all play? And also, some of those strategies are interdependent, they, you know, rely on each other, and so we have, you know, Strategy 1 might be acquisition, Strategy 2 might be demolition, and then a Strategy 3 might be a site assembly holding, or might be disposition at that time. So on the next several slides, you'll see that, you know, this is kind of an outline of some of how that process works on block level planning, in terms of identifying those blocks. You know, the blocks are identified with the community master plans, with the strategic implementation plans, what is and what has been the priority of the work that we've been, you know, doing in partnership with community for a number of years, as well as what is kind of next in line for that, in terms of phasing, building from strength, or creating opportunity and strength where it can be, working through kind of identifying those, and then how, you know, this is part, we can go to the next, yep, part of that community plan, like I said, building from strength, and also kind of that ongoing work that happens as well. On the next slide, this is part of, you know, how some of those meetings and block level planning meetings happen. We have community meetings, a lot of this also sometimes happens in the monthly work group meetings tied with the impact investment areas, as well as other community meetings with our community development partners, or our community partners in our different vacant reduction priority geographies. What are the blocks that are important to them, where do we need to build from strength, where do we need to create opportunity, how are we going to do that? And then, you know, includes others at the table as well, in terms of looking at those different factors on a block that may impact some of those decisions of what could be the best tool in the toolbox, or one of the opportune tools might not be the best tool, but what is a tool that makes sense to use to tackle that property on that block. We then assign those strategies with those tools in the toolbox. So like I mentioned, some of those strategies, you know, and the strategy assigned, it does, you know, take in consideration, as I mentioned before, the legal considerations, building conditions. So one of the key pieces that we're doing when we're sitting with maps and lots of laptops, is A, we have the data that we use from our roof study data, that helps identify potential issues for stabilization or demolition, but we also have our aerial Eagle View program that we use. So oftentimes, we're having conversations with Eagle View open as well, so we're looking at the condition of the properties, as we're also talking through some of those legal conditions, or looking at what might be there. Housing market conditions, whether or not a property is INREM eligible, what the permit activity is, and some of those other key legal components that come into play as well, such as, is this property one that already has a private tax sale foreclosure case on it, which would impact what tool in the toolbox to use. So once we work through kind of assigning those strategies, then it is deploying those strategies, and, you know, it's prioritized within the operations at DHCD. Also, the coordination with the community development partners, because often, you know, some of the strategies are actually on a block to create a whole block outcome. There are some blocks where the city, at this stage, has not as much need for a tool, but it's our community development partner that might have the majority of the properties, or is working through renovation, or working on a couple of, you know, items in terms of strategies, and our job is to figure out how best to support that community development partner. You know, we also, this block level planning informs the cities, informs DHCD's capital budget requests, it informs the Baltimore Vacants Reinvestment Initiative, the BVRI funding requests, lines with Mayor's Neighborhood Sub-Cabinet, as well as the coordination that occurs with the other agencies that do part of the work as well, like I mentioned before, DOT, DPW, planning, and others. Then, you know, we work through monitoring progress. Because this work is dynamic, because it is ever-changing, because it is fluid, things change. So we do have processes in place to go back and look and revisit the priority blocks, because there are things that happen outside of the city's control, in terms of private market activity, or if there's, you know, an emergency demolition that has occurred on a property, we've had that happen, where we're in the process of prepping for an acquisition, and emergency demolition happens, so we have to kind of make those notes. And then also, through our kind of monitoring of the funding needs required, to carry out the different strategies associated with the block, and also the BVRI funds and coordination there. So on the next slide, what we're showing here is the 2600 block of Loyola Northway. And this was Loyola Northway in January of 2020. I just realized that, yes. This is the 2600 block of Loyola Northway, this is what it was looking like in January of 2020, just out of, you know, for kind of reminders and context for those listening, or for the council. Purple, if it's purple, it means that it's owner occupied, this is a screen grab from, you know, CodeMap, looking at that. If it is green, it would be owned by Mayor and City Council. Kind of the gray indicates a non-owner occupied, with the red boxes meaning that it is a vacant property. As you can see, there were 18 VBMs, we only had four owner occupied properties. This is a block that we had started, you know, working on significantly with the community partner, Park Heights Renaissance, at the time when the block level planning was originally done for this. The strategy was to utilize receivership, and then some strategic acquisition by the city. So then, what we're able to do is actually go on the next page and see where we are with that block, pretty much as of, as of now. Actually, there's one update on this, the INREM acquisition is actually completed, so we now own the one, one property there. But this is an example of a sample block where those strategies were assigned, how the strategies were assigned, and now what you see is the outcomes of those strategies, in terms of how we look at progress, how we're measuring progress, and what we're seeing. So we have a number of properties, if you look back on the slide previously, you'll remember seeing a number of the vacancies with the red squares and the triangles slated for acquisition through receivership. And now, we have on this slide, the strategies, we have acquisition that is underway for future green space, we have acquisition that's INREM in progress, which is actually is completed. We also know that there's a private sale to a developer in progress, the city has acquired two additional city-owned properties that are in the process of disposition with the community development partner, they've chosen the developer for those. We've worked with the private sale on the end of that, to know who that developer is, we're going to be providing assistance on the redevelopment of that property as well. And we also have the different types of strategies. For those that are looking, there is a strategy, and those that are kind of like looking through the different strategies, there is a strategy on here that is commissioner conversation, because sometimes, working in community is not necessarily a straight line, sometimes it is a squiggly line, it is, could be an upside backwards, down, and roundabout, and it takes sometimes different community organizations, also have different questions in different communities, or sometimes there is a property that might have something that has a sensitive nature to it, whether or not it be a legal case, or if there's a change of a strategy that, you know, is a reason behind a potential change for a strategy, we do have that as one of the strategies on here. I just wanted to like highlight that, since it is on the presentation and could spark, well, what does that actually mean? It means that sometimes there are difficult conversations that need to have, and those elevate themselves to the commissioner level, to have those conversations. So then we look at demolition, site assembly, acquisition, we also have our compliance components, so if there's a property when we're doing block level planning that already has a land disposition agreement, that gets assigned the strategy of compliance. Also, some of them are monitoring for permits, or monitoring code enforcement. Sometimes the monitoring of code enforcement comes in, especially when you're doing block level planning, when a property has just changed hands, and it has a new owner on the deed, there are certain things, like we want to make sure that we get that failure to abate issued in the appropriate timeline, as well as other components, but need to just make sure that we're also monitoring, and then looking at stabilization. We often prioritize on stabilization, the properties that are vacant next to an owner occupied property. So now, we have some before and after pictures to kind of show how that block level planning, knowing what strategies we've assigned, how we have been actively then deploying those strategies, what kind of results, and what are the components that we see when we're able to see the before and after of the 2600 block of Loyola Northway. So we have some of those before and after photographs. This also included, you know, improvement, home improvement and facade grants for existing homeowners, that brand-new trees have been planted on this block, we have the funding from the state and the city that went into supporting the renovation, and then there's additional funding that's going to finish out those last five vacant properties, with the one privately held, and then the one working in partnership with the CDO partner. And then, this is also what we're looking at, just what that investment looks like over time, and how we create, end up creating whole block outcomes, which then supports the whole neighborhood outcomes as well. In terms of looking at that kind of block and site selection, I've talked previously about how this plays in with the vacant reduction priority geographies, as well as the impact investment areas. You know, a significant number, over 70% of the vacant building notices are in the vacant reduction priority geographies. Also, the priority blocks, you know, not only are they in the impact investment areas, vacant reduction priority geographies, there is, like I said, there's high concentration of vacancies, we may have additional work that has happened on those blocks with community, and that's kind of how they've been elevated, in terms of those zones, and building from strength and working through. In terms of the blocks right now, that are in the pipeline, we have 250 focused target blocks for fiscal year '25, out of the 313 blocks identified. A lot of the blocks for fiscal year '25 are blocks, they are prioritized, because they are the ones, we, this is the first year in fiscal year '25 that we started to kind of lump the priority blocks into fiscal years, per se, actually, not per se, but actually lump them into fiscal years. But those represent a significant number of blocks in all, actually, your communities that are sitting up here today on the council, that you could probably think of off the top of your head, and there are a couple that I can share, that I'll just share publicly. Like, we just shared the Loyola Northway block, because we are far enough along in that, where the potential for speculation, and that is one reason why we have not provided in the public setting, the specific blocks, is because one of the key things that we are working to avoid is some of the speculation that occurs on the private market, and trying to make sure that we have the ability to use the tools in the toolbox, and the legal tools that we need to do to acquire the properties and move the properties forward. Because a priority block, or because a block level priority block is in a fiscal year does not mean that that will be a block that is completed in a fiscal year. Some of these blocks, even moving as swiftly as we possibly can, and all of the stars aligning on every single component of all of the work across not just the city, but with all of the CDO partners, you typically still would be looking at easily 12 to 12 months, a year to three years, to kind of move things through and kind of tackle. As you can see, even the 2600 block of Loyola Northway, the majority of the, of the block is completed, but we still have those five remaining vacant properties, and, you know, we had work that we were really starting on back in 2020 on some of that, and now, some of that disposition, the disposition side is actually, you know, in partnership with the CDO, and we're waiting on the CDO and the partner on the disposition side to help move that forward. And that's the case on some of the other blocks as well, that, you know, we will hold the properties, and this is one of the big changes that also has occurred over the last, I would say, five years, is that the city creates and will work through an LDA, let's say the LDA might be for 15 properties, the land disposition agreement might be for 15 properties, but they're not settling on all 15 at once, and they're not taking down or starting construction on all 15. So the city still holds a number of those properties until the development partner is ready to move on to the next batch. And that was one of the things that we changed also in terms of policy, to help our CDO partners be able to better manage their inventory, taxes, holding costs, et cetera, to make it easier for them to do the work, and also to be able to move those properties a little bit faster. So not all of the properties, not all the priority blocks will be completed in a fiscal year that they're identified on, and we have a lot of the work that happens with the community in terms of working things through. On this next slide, we wanted to talk a little bit about just the priority blocks by council district. We do have some, this is the slide that we'll show, that we do have some blocks that could be counted twice, depending upon where they might sit, because they might be split between two districts. So we have over 883 identified for fiscal year '25 and '26, and you can get to that, because they are, the chart is going to be different slightly, because they will have some that are counted twice, depending upon what district they fall in. We also, we're going to show on the next slide, some of the key pieces around where we are with the block level planning in terms of impact investment areas, some of our strategic blocks that fall within the vacancy reduction geographies, and the neighborhoods that are associated, associated with that work. So when we talk about the block level planning work, one of the key components, and one of the, I think, the number-one strategy oftentimes that is utilized is the acquisition of a property, which, an acquisition of a property is going to lead itself into a disposition of a property, in terms of how are we working to dispose of that property, how are we working with our partners to identify, who is going to, you know, get those properties, and how we are working forward on the disposition and moving forward. So, you know, one of the things that has come up, and a question happens in terms of, like, if a city acquires, if the city acquires the property, what's the timeline then for that to be, to the board of estimates, or for that to be to the, you know, settlement table? One of the key things on that is that there is not a set timeline for that, because it depends, it is very dependent on a, very dependent on the project, very dependent on the property, very dependent on the end-use, very dependent on... on the property, very dependent on the end-use, very dependent on the community development partner, very dependent on whether or not we're doing site assembly, whether or not they're ready to move. And it also is not necessarily a one-for-one in terms of when we acquire, we acquire one and we dispose of one. There may be several instances where we acquire 20, do demolition, do then lot consolidation, and dispose of one. So there isn't that direct correlation, and the timeline for something along those lines is not going to be a specific timeline because it's also geared, you know, specific by project or property. One of the key things that we have done to help in terms of expedite, speed up, streamline, is the developer RFQ process that we've put into place in a number of the neighborhoods to help identify some of the developers on the front end, which actually saves time on the back end. We were seeing that we would get responses, you know, or questions, and then it was taking time to have those reviews done by the community partners on the development, you know, informing the chosen developer. So, moving that to the front end, doing a developer RFQ, doing it in partnership with community, you know, we've done successful RFQs now for Southwest Partnership, Ketchment Area, East Baltimore Midway, Coldstream Homes Montebello, Broadway East. There's a process that's in place in partnership with some of our West Impact Investment Areas. We also have the Parkview RFQ that we've completed in the Penn North neighborhood. We've, you know, learned a lot through that process. This was a new way, this was part of kind of reimagining how to do the disposition and what that would look like. So we have, have some learning lessons that we've learned on some of the engagement components. We will be putting that into play in the future. But just really want to kind of state that there are some key things there when we just talk about timeline in terms of how that works. In terms of the methods, one of the other components that we put in was the fixed pricing program, which does, you know, definitely help in terms of streamlining disposition in part because it sets a very clear price. It helps make it very clear to persons that are purchasing and takes away some of the, also that additional kind of vague components to the process and moving it through. We also do the request for proposals, the expression of interest, and also kind of working through the bundle program. We did this in 3,600, well, in the Park Heights Avenue, Park Heights corridor, and we'll be continuing to do bundles. And what that looks like is bundling the properties, if they are not already tied to one of the developer registries, looking at where we have the opportunity to create a, you know, economies of scale for the developers. So instead of having just two properties on this block or one property on this block, actually looking at where do we have properties, whether or not they're on the same block or right around the corner, or the next block up, or the next block up, so that then those are bundled together, looking at whether or not it would be, you know, 10, 15 properties, are we looking for one developer, two developers? I would kind of put Parkview Recreation Center RFQ a little bit in line of a bundle because it was very specific geographic with a set number of properties kind of tied to it as well, moving that forward. So in terms of the disposition process and what we're looking at, we do have the percent of dispositions receiving BoE approval within 120 days. I, you know, there was a question about 90 days. Typically, we look at 90 days from the time of BoE approval till settlement as a 90-day time period. A lot of times, I do want to put an asterisk by that because we, as the city, do not control that 90-day timeframe. Once we go to the board of estimates on a disposition, the buyer of the property is responsible for choosing their title company. They're responsible for kind of finalizing what they need to finalize for their financing and anything else that they need to get into place to be able to go to settlement, especially if they're doing a construction loan or something along those lines. And then we work with the title company to create the deed and to get things set into place and manage the liens and so forth. So, there are two different timeframes that we look at. We look at the board of estimates approval within 120 days, and then we also look at the time period after the board of estimates, which is, you know, a 90-day, but that is not all part of, you know, the city work. A lot of that 90 days is dependent upon the buyer and what we're looking at there. The other piece is, in terms of going to board of estimates, we do have the real estate committee, and I'm going to go ahead and talk about some, you know, process improvements that we're making to help along these lines. We have had conversations with the comptroller's office regarding the real estate committee to look at, to look at a streamlined process for real estate committee, similar to what we do with fixed pricing proposals in terms of knowing what we're acquiring and where that is going, which would eliminate some of the time regarding real estate committee. And then also, you know, there is a standard, our standard LDA for fixed price, and there is typically a standard LDA for any other type of sale, but depending upon the type of sale, the type of project, you might have, there might be negotiations on that land disposition agreement or changes needed. So we're also looking at what on the LDA side can be done to help streamline that, to have people that are purchasing better understand what that document is, what changes are needed, and how they would negotiate or move through that. We actually are working through some of the general kind of data information and what we've seen. Overall, we know that, you know, we're, in the last two years, looking at, if you look at the last two years together, it's around 184 days fiscal year '24. We actually were running in the 133 days of that average day to BoE, but currently up to fiscal year '26 right now in terms of the number of properties that have been moving. One of the things that could be skewing part of this metric right now is the fixed pricing policy and those properties because it has a different process. So we do want to get back to the council and we can, I don't know if I can make a council request or a council commitment, but we want to get back to you with just a refinement of this to make sure, because when we were looking at it, actually even as recently as this afternoon, a couple of, before the hearing, we had a quick question come in on this that we weren't able to get answered before. So we want to circle back with you on the data regarding the, both, the, on this disposition metric for that percentage.
Is this the discrepancy between OPI and then the number that's on the screen now?
Yes, so it would be wanting to just look at this one for the disposition and checking that.
Okay.
Yep.
Long as we have it before the next hearing, that would be perfect. And then allows us to work it out together.
Great, thank you. One of the other key areas that we've been working on is the disposition compliance. This is something that we've talked about, you know, actually I've had several conversations with a number of the council people about this as well. And then looking at, you know, in terms of compliance, one of the key things, a question came up to us earlier today, like, about what concerns us about compliance. And as Deputy Commissioner Redfern stated, everything concerns us about compliance. And everything concerns us, not just about compliance, but everything concerns us about the vacant buildings and moving them to productive use. So, one of the things that we have done and done some restructuring on within the agency over the last two years, two and a half years, really has been around having the dedicated compliance person. We have identified that in our delivery plan as additional, also staff that we're looking at and kind of restructuring. One of the, one of the benefits of the software product that we invested in now, four years ago, started that process, three or four years, the time is blurry at this moment. One of the key components to that software investment was that the software that we invested in identify, helps us on the front end with the identification of the project or the property. It manages the legal components of filing cases and so forth. I think, Councilman, you had asked about that at one of our in-rem hearings about, do you have, and yes, we do, because it also helps manage the legal filings and moving that. And then it picks up when we acquire a property to then help manage our asset management team. So our asset management team can be looking in as what needs to happen while it's in our stead. And then it picks up on the disposition side, so the application comes in, and then it also works for that on the disposition, working it through, knowing what status it's in. And then it works on the compliance, because it also has a direct tie-in to be able to know when permits are pulled, you know, how many days have passed since the LDA, you know, went to the board of estimates. So it helps us on the compliance side. So it's everything from, you know, seeing the property in block level planning, targeting that for acquisition, moving it through the legal process, the legal acquisition process, the holding process, obtaining the application in some way or another from the public, the application process review, disposition, and then compliance is all done within that, within that software. So that helps us there on that disposition compliance piece. And that, you know, talks a little bit about also in terms of staffing and what we have. You know, we do have a number of different staff members. At the last hearing, we did share some of the numbers. So within Development Division and the Land Management Staffing, which is the team that does, you know, everything from the strategic planning component that's new, we have 10 Neighborhood Development and Outreach Team members, the three relocation and donation team members, the six lands transaction team members, the project development team members, and we're actually in the process of filling three vacancies on those teams as well. One of the key pieces that we're doing is reimagining again, I mentioned this before, you know, we reimagined some of the processes in terms of how we do disposition. The team has been reimagining also the work in terms of how the teams work and who's responsible for some of the acquisition and disposition of the single residential vacant properties, and then also the acquisition or disposition of some of the larger properties that the agency also manages as well, because there's the disposition of some of the larger properties that is a different process. It requires a little bit of a different skill set. And right now, there's been some people kind of doing some of both with a couple of people that are more trained on the large side. So the team has been looking at how best to rearrange the staff internally to gain efficiencies and be more effective on the acquisition and disposition as it relates to the real estate agents, real estate officers within the agency. And that also takes into consideration the vacant land as well, because that's a key part of the work that we do. It's not just about the vacant property with the BBN, but it's also about the land. You know, we do work with community in this work in terms of planning. You know, we, you know, work in terms of what's offered based off of block level planning with the community. The Neighborhood Development Team leads some of those community engagement efforts through the work groups, through visioning sessions, community partner engagement sessions, updates to strategic implementation plans, or updates to strategic implementation mapping. I know that Councilman Blanchard and I have had multiple conversations. We are working, you know, actively with Upton on making some changes to their mapping and their property plans, so that is an ongoing process. It wasn't done in one meeting or two meeting. There's additional meetings that are happening to kind of refine. And some of that refinement and engagement is also occurring because of different components of investment that is happening from the state in terms of BVRI awards, which might also provide some opportunity. And also, we have some different opportunities that have arisen through some funding that we have in partnership to look at plans with Wreckin' Parks on the infrastructure side, as well as the vacant lots work that we're doing across multiple agencies as well. So all of that plays in on the transparency side. And just some examples, you know, like I mentioned before, in terms of the offerings that we've put out, the expressions of interest, we also did a Vine Street RFQ, request for qualifications, that was part of our SEPTED pilot, and then Parkview as well. And in terms of engagement, you know, we have and work to engage a number of developers across, on the disposition side especially. We have prioritized across the agency, the engagement with our small minority and women-led development partners across the city in terms of prioritizing engagement, finding ways to reach them, engage with them, provide them opportunity, provide them with some technical assistance, and move things forward. I think that's one of the key pieces of the open door type of, no wrong door, open door type of policy that we've had at DHCD. Sometimes, you know, I think that it can frustrate the staff sometimes just because we are, you know, saying, yes, we will talk to you and we will research and see where you are and try to help, and that takes a lot of time. But we have been working on a number of different ways to find and work with the developers that typically have not been worked with in the past. And also being supportive of a lot of our partners that have been doing cohorts of training that, so we have more developers that are ready on our small minority developers to be prepared, you know, for disposition of properties, to be a partner on a project, you know, to come in as an equity partner, or to also learn with some of our more seasoned developers. So we have been actively working to engage those developers and residents as well to be prepared on the disposition. So with that, we say thank you for having us tonight. We thank Chair, as you said in your opening remarks, that this is extremely important to give more insight and kind of as much under the hood as we can for the work that's happening around Reframe Baltimore and how our block level planning, achieving whole block outcomes, working through that, and where the disposition side comes in. So we thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Commissioner Kennedy. So, I appreciate the overview. This is extremely helpful because trying to explain this to colleagues is not my, is not my purview, but also just the impact of it. I, I'm going to start with a question near and dear to me, which is the seventh council district, which happens to be number two on that list because, well, actually number three because...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Nine, twelve, and seven.
Nine, twelve, and seven have the largest number of vacancies in the city.
Yes.
I, I know what whole block looks like. I looked at the Nehemiah Houses in Sandtown Winchester, and I see that we, we did the right thing, but we made mistakes there. We didn't build strength around those homes. And now we're making the strategic investment because community access to build a new recreation center in the neighborhood to start building assets. The question I have, as we're rolling this out, I've seen some, I've seen some portions of where the, you have identified blocks where there may not be any, like, anchor institutions or strength. So what is your way, what is your plan, especially, I give, I give an idea, Harlem Park, I'll be specific, right? Because I love Harlem Park, I love the homes and the history in Harlem Park, but I know that we've, I've seen that neighborhood go through multiple plans where it would be a bedroom community for the West Baltimore Mark. I've seen it be a plan where it would be more suitable for multifamily dwellings, homeownership. I just want to know, when we're, when we're thinking about a neighborhood like that, how do we deeply engage? Because there's a lot of apathy when you've lived around vacant housing a long time, and how do we inform that strategy there?
Yep, that's a great question, and I think Harlem Park is a really good example. They're one of our, what we've called for a couple of years now, our community asset-building neighborhoods. We've done several walks with Harlem Park. We have also had conversations, because at one point Harlem Park and Sandtown were working on the master plan together, and now that has, you know, dissipated and kind of fallen apart. But this is one reason why, within, you know, the agency, we created the, this is one reason why, in the agency, we created the strategic planning... one reason why, in the agency, we created the Strategic Planning Division that sits under Deputy Redfern and Assistant Commissioner Woods, where we now have planners in-house that also, and an architect in-house. And Harlem Park is one where, in working with them, I actually was just on the phone with Ms. Fisher yesterday, and, you know, she was excited and had some questions, because what we brought to the table and what I brought to the table in terms of conversations with them was rethinking some of their components of the plan that they had been working on with Sandtown, and thinking outside of just infill, new construction, that's multi-use with ground-level retail, or where does it make the most sense for that? Looking at the new types of density in terms of one-story, two-bedroom properties that you could downsize into as an older adult, as new construction, and looking at architectural components and different housing stock and style to create mixed-income opportunities, as well as to look at what are those strengths? What are the infrastructure pieces? What are the parks? How do you build retail into this? And combining all of those pieces. And I think that is the part about Reframe Baltimore that is different. You know, when we think back 20 years, or even 30 years now, on some of the projects that you just mentioned, the components of infrastructure, the components of really what it takes to make our neighborhoods whole again, or to actually not just make them whole again, but just to provide, and the basic, what I call, you know, core necessities, you know, those are components that some people call assets. And we don't call those assets, we call those necessities, you know, for communities. So, green space, recreation space, your business corridors, your access to, you know, food access, all of those pieces make up parts of this plan, because it isn't, like I said, just about building the housing. You have to have the other components that come into play to create those opportunities. And I think that we do that with this, and we've seen that coming to fruition in some of the success and some of the planning that we're doing.
Yeah, and I appreciate that, because I look at, like, the Live Baltimore studies, and knowing that 58% of the people who actually populate this city, who actually live here and want to be homeowners, and a large portion of them happen to be low-income black residents. So, my question is, have we really thought through a strategy where we're providing an opportunity for someone who makes $15 and $20 an hour, who's a working person, to actually own the home? Because as a city, we're attracting people with middle-class incomes who are coming here and college-educated. For those who are working class, how do we keep them here and allow them to have access? And I'm just going to be transparent, because I'm unapologetically black, and I'm going to say this out loud, that black wealth is, in this country, has come through homeownership. And I think about my great-grandmother and how she blockbusted into the 3,400 block of Gwynnswell's Parkway. And I just want to make sure that, as we're building incomes, that the black middle-class and the black people here have access, because I don't want them to be left behind or displaced, because that's what happened in DC.
Yep.
So, I would love to see if you guys can edify or provide some context in how we're going to get low-income persons access to homeownership, because then they have equity that is built around the strength of their communities being built around them, to actually use, not only to pay down debt, or to actually provide opportunity for a child to go to school. There's a lot that can come with that wealth, in that income, in that home.
Couldn't agree with you more on your comments, and it is something that we've been looking at for a number of years, in terms of how to create those opportunities and how to create mixed-income communities at all varying levels, which create thriving communities, which do not concentrate poverty, and create opportunities for homeownership at all varying levels. So, some of the things that we do have in place and that we're working on, so one, you know, we've seen it is a shared equity model, so it does have a shared equity component to it, but there is equity that grows, and there is stability that happens, and other pieces with our community land trust that we fund through their, you know, their work in the neighborhoods. We also have down payment and closing cost assistance that we've targeted and kind of revamped, especially with CD BG, trying to get as much, you know, assistance as possible, depending upon where they fall. We've also worked with a number of the communities, depending upon what target income they were looking at and where they wanted to be, to be able to provide the larger incentives to bring the mortgage down to where someone could have, you know, make that mortgage payment and afford it at a, you know, at a job wage of, you know, minimum wage or shortly above that. Another key piece that we've been working on, we have a Fuse Fellow that's been in the agency, and Dalmar has been working on looking at what we need across the board to increase people across Baltimore that will be ready to purchase a property and that can purchase a property. Because what we see often is, you know, there are people that could purchase a property, even if they are at a lower earning wage, and they don't know where to start. They have never, you know, their parents might not have ever purchased property, they need someone out there. So, Dalmar's been working on looking at what's needed for the housing coaching. This isn't counseling, this is coaching, how to build that pipeline, and how to ensure that there's wraparound services, both during the process of getting ready to buy, buying, and then after you purchase, because after you purchase is just as important as before you purchase for the lower-wage earner families, and how to encourage that and get people through that process. Right now, the working name on that program is Protect the Nest. I would say kind of stay tuned for more of that. He's been in part of the discovery phase of the Fuse Fellow work and working through our, with our community partners that do housing counseling and getting some other components to that.
Have we talked to HABC? Because by numbers, there's about 30,000 residents that left the city of Baltimore through reported vouchers. And if I recall, the federal government still has written to HUD that you can cash in your vouchers for $30,000 in down payment assistance, and the federal government would pay 25% of the mortgage for the first 15 years. I think that if we're going to be strategic, there's a pipeline of people who live in these surrounding counties that would love to come back home, that we can provide housing for. I think that I would be, I would love to help you figure it out, because there are people, it saves us, the taxpayer, money, but also provides wealth and equity for people to live in the city. But also, it's cheaper than actually paying a voucher for the lifetime of it. So, I think that's the conversation, because I've seen HABC's, like, coaching. I think it's really good. I think that it is, it requires more people to be present with the person, and I think we need to really think about how we can expand on the model and make it meaningful. And I say this, because if we're going to grow the city, and there's opportunities to do it internally, and a lot of people that we need, and this is where, as I say, equity needs to be an actual verb.
Yeah.
In saying that, like, equity means that I'm going down to your house, going through your paperwork, looking at your actual bank statements with you, and walking you through the process.
Yep.
And then figuring out ways that I can find someone to forgive some of your debt, so that you can actually qualify for the home. And I think we need to, I think we need to figure it out, and I'm willing to go and cheerlead. I'm actually going to NLC tomorrow to cheerlead and see if we can get somebody to pay for, like, a study on how we can create that model. Because it is something, as someone who has been homeless, has lived in public housing, who had a voucher, who now lives in a middle-class household, I see the wealth of being able to provide somebody that opportunity to actually build wealth in their home. And I say that, because my grandmother lived at 920 Broadway.
I want to get out of here in seven.
Oh, yeah, I'm trying. I have my next question.
Just, oh.
Yeah.
So, yes, we have had and worked multiple, in multiple different iterations over the years with HABC, on trying to increase the number of residents with vouchers that will take advantage of the Housing Choice Home Ownership Program. That is, has historically been a difficult, a difficult area to increase those taking advantage and working towards that, and working with HABC on that. I know that this is something that they have been looking at how to do. Outside of HABC and that piece, we also have a couple of really great housing counseling partners, one of which is in the room, that does the coaching model that we're looking to expand on, on the outside, really give them more resources, which is what Dalmar's been working on. But NHS, Southeast CDC really are the leaders on the coaching model, sitting down, looking at the bank statements, looking at that on the kind of private side outside of what HABC does. But increasing the number of people that can take advantage and would take advantage of the voucher homeownership program is something that absolutely needs to be addressed and looked at, because it is a population that isn't easily able to move into that next stage, but we have to figure out how to help those that want to.
And as a follow-up, have we ever, have we really done a strong strategy with HR to look at our low-income employees here, too?
Yes.
Because that is untapped potential that we have, and the majority of them are renters who are being priced out as much as possible. And I think that we need to look at how we can incorporate them, because we do have a tax credit. It's not very much taken care, taken advantage of. And I just want to see if we can do that. But I will not monopolize the questions, and I will go to our Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to start out with two committee requests. We don't have to discuss it a lot, given the time, but one of them is, you had, Commissioner, you went through the staffing very quickly, so I wonder, and it's not in the slides, so if I could get that in a committee request, the current staffing capacity for disposition, as you've talked about it, and what your ideal is. What we're doing now is what we're doing now, but of course, we want to accelerate all of this work. So, in your ideal, what does it look like? I mean, the acquisition numbers are different, because it's like a set acquisition disposition, as you've articulated, is different depending on what the plan is, who's going to, if we're bundling, et cetera. So, I get that, and you may not have a cadence yet as to how many you want to get out the door, but knowing that there's still some challenges with timing, I want to know what you need, so that we can do that advocacy.
So, I think we'll circle with Mayor's Office, MoGR, and the CA's office as it relates to the second piece of that. There are components to where I don't think that we would be able to provide that in a committee request soon, because the team is actually actively, like I mentioned, they're actively, you know, looking at some of the efficiencies, just in terms of organization and rethinking workflows and who's doing what. So, I would want to circle back on that. I can't make a commitment on that council request.
Sure. So, if I could get the current staffing kind of in the next couple of weeks, but then by the next hearing, because we're doing these quarterly, you think you might have a better idea?
I can't make that commitment at this time.
Sure, understood. Right. So, we'll work through that and see what that would look like. But I do, you know, as you know, what I'm trying to do is, because I agree with this program, I think we're doing the right thing by moving in this direction, but we need to go quicker and we need to do more. And so, understanding what the vision is and what we need is something that I want to continue to advocate for. The next committee request is the, the list and the qualifications, you didn't touch on this at all, and again, because, you know, maybe you can talk about it a little bit. The people who we are selling properties to, what are the qualifications, right? We know we have some under fixed price, we know we have some under, so, and obviously, we're not just giving it to any LLC. There's a specific, hopefully, which I think there is, pattern in terms of what we're actually looking for. Someone with a track record, people who actually know what they're doing, and that we can come, you know, that will comply with the LDA. So, do you have those for each of these disposition, you know, or is it all just one set? It's the same?
It's pretty much all the same.
Sure.
And, you know, it includes, you know, we look at if the LLC is an active LLC, we look at different, whether or not they own other vacant buildings, do the other vacant buildings have permits on them, are they one of the partners, like, and some of that comes into play.
Sure, and then you've got the issue of single-member LLCs, and if they're like a million, they have a million, so you've got to sort of sift through that.
And the team does, they do, I think, I don't know if Tamara or...
I think the budget is the fourth part, but...
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, Wendy Redfern, Deputy Commissioner for Development at DHCD. So, as Commissioner Kennedy said, the criteria is basically the same. Where it is distinctive is where it relates to the budget, and that is important as it relates to how large the project is, right? So, for example, if we are selling a single property, that type of budget review is very different than if we are selling a bundle.
For sure.
Or if we're selling a larger RFP.
Yeah.
Right? So, we do a lot more vetting to make sure that the capital is in place for that developer to be successful. That's really the difference we have there.
Yeah, thank you. If you can just give me that list and some of those nuances, not today, but at, you know, would be, that would be great. Because I think the main thing is that we don't, obviously, we want to make sure that we're protecting our residents. And then, as last year, my office found that since the 1990s, there are 428 properties that were sold by the city that are still vacant. And so, we do not want to address, to have that. So, I'm really glad to hear that you've got a whole compliance unit that's working through it, but the first step is actually getting it to the person who's actually going to do, you know, the right thing. So, I appreciate that, yeah.
Just to interject, I think what we can do, and it'd be level setting, is that in the next oversight hearing, can we get an example of each type and what we would look for through vetting, to be more specific and make it easier for consumption? That way, it's more specific. And then, is there, I forgot what your other request was.
The other request was the capacity, which, again, is not in the slide, so that's what I wanted to separate.
We'll provide the staff, the current staffing, and then we can do that in the next couple of weeks, but we are not making a commitment on the, you know, ideal or the need and...
Sure. We'll work with the Mayor's Office and the staff on that for the next steps. Yep. But I do want to try to get that sooner than later, so I can advocate in the budget. And then my question is, I've got a couple of questions. All right, so I was the one who asked the question about the 90 days, and the reason that I, and so, when I, the question was about, that the idea around getting fixed price, so it's a fixed price, so we're not negotiating and taking time to negotiate, was to narrow down from, you know, 180, 300 days or whatever, to, the announcement is sitting in front of me right here, it says 90 days. And so, from two years ago, when we first announced fixed price. So, is it that now you've changed the metric to be 120 for now, or are we going to go back to that? Because right now, the metric on this slide is that it's dispositions received by, BOE approval by 120 days.
I would need to go, because we have the two numbers, 120 and 90, that have always been in, in play. We've had 120, and then we also have the 90 on the back end. So, I would need to go back and check emails from the fixed pricing announcement to see where we were on getting to the 90. There have been some updates over, in terms of some of the performance measures that we've done over the last couple of years related to budgeting and performance measures there, so I want to check on that. But I just need to go back and confirm, because we've always had a 120 and 90-day split, and I don't know exactly where we landed on...
Well, I think, I think what I'm really asking is if we could get metrics where we know from the time that we've decided that this property was going to be sold, right? I totally separate it from acquisition. Some people have asked me, well, in-rem takes, no, in-rem is very clear, and there's very specifics. It's from when we decide that we're going to sell this property.
Yeah.
So, we're going to take that away. When we decide we're going to sell it to when it gets to BOE is one set. And so, I'd love to be able to see, because I'm tracking all the fixed price that I can, and not just fixed price, but all of them. And then, you know, what those are. So, that's the zero to 90 days, it's the 90 to 120 days, you know, to just kind of see how quickly we're able to do this. And then, the last, you've already, yeah, go ahead.
I just want to make sure Tony has that, because I just want to make sure we're clear, because I'm trying to make sure I'm clear on this. You would like to know, because what I just read says aims to be 90 days. So, we're trying to see how close to the goal is DCC getting for the acquisition piece, getting to the 90-day goal.
It says, "As a result of this review, the agency has developed a policy that aims to reduce the timeframe for processing sales of city-owned properties, which can range currently," this is in 2024, "180 to 365 days, down to 90 days by creating a fixed-price policy." policy."
So I think the fair, the fair ask is to get a current status of where the current disposition is in terms of the timelines and meeting the 90-day goals, and then seeing where they've found efficiencies to, to lower that number. That way, we have a metric that says that, hey, we went from this time period to this time period. We've now done these efficiencies that allow us to get to here. I think that allows us to track progress. But also, I think, I would say, what is the time period you want it for? Because that's a fair question. If this was announced in, I think this is November of '24?
May.
May of '24? So I would go since this...
Actually, March, it was announced in March, but we started in May, the first case.
So I would be fair and say that I would do the first six months of this fiscal year, which is July 1 until, Lord Jesus, December 31st? Am I right?
Mm-hmm.
Right? Okay, perfect. To December 31st.
Yeah, I was going to suggest to use the calendar, either the fiscal year 25 or calendar year fiscal 25, because I get that the first year was just like bumps in the road trying to get things through. Like, I get that.
I would do the first six months because then they would probably have the funding to even try to do it. And then, we can save it for a later oversight hearing to see what it is for the entire fiscal year. So we get a six-month benchmark, and then we get an entire fiscal year benchmark so that we can see what happens in between those two numbers.
Right. And I'm not worried about, I'm not looking at, at numbers, I'm looking at time, right? Because I know that we, there's reasons why we don't distribute everything, dispose of everything. But we're just in terms of time, so that if there's efficiencies that can be utilized, you know, as you're looking at what that timeframe is, it would be the percentage of properties that are, from the time we decide we're going to sell it to the time it goes to BOE, are at that 90-day frame, 120-day frame, and above.
I think it's a fair question because anything announced in May would not be funded until July 1. So I think that it would be easier...
They had the funding for it, they had cases in May of 2024 that were approved. But I'm not, I'm not going to count that. I'm thinking, like you are, beginning of this year to end of this year, calendar year.
Oh, the fiscal year, sorry. Fiscal year, not the calendar.
July 1, 2025 to December 31st, 2025.
Yes. Got that, Tony?
Yes.
Perfect.
Yeah, and I think that will be helpful just to continue to track. And then the other piece, my other question is around, on that, on this slide, I took it apart from the slides because I'm going to hang it up so I can, like, keep looking at it, is...
Well, remember, we're giving you updated information on that slide as well.
Okay, that's right. This is the slide that you wanted to give us more information. Okay, well, then I'll put it aside, and then you'll get you, you'll get us another one.
Don't frame that one.
Okay. Because the, the number of properties seemed off.
Yeah, that's why we were...
That's why, okay. Because there's more.
Yeah.
Okay.
And that's, yeah.
Gotcha. Okay. And then, the, the other question was on whole blocks. And so, the whole blocks that are listed here in your presentation and in the first set of BVRI is off by like five properties. I'm not going to worry about that. But I just kind of wondered if, it's not on the BVRI dashboard, but I have suggested it, is that we should be actually looking at how many of the whole blocks are actually finished as a measure as well.
Yeah.
And, and the thing is that it may, like you said, it's not going to take a year, it might take two because of situations, and I get that. But then, so, so if we know that there's, we'll just say, 313 blocks that we're working on now, that we've done all the planning, we know the strategy, and we want to see how many are completed at some point in time, once we have some completions, does it, so we're also adding to that list now? Is that, you just said that for 2026, you're at, you're looking at, you're not adding 500, but you're looking at 500 to 570 to see if there's more to add? That's in the slide? That you're adding, that you're looking at an additional 570?
No. So what it is, is that we're, we had the 570 for fiscal year '26. It's not necessarily that that is going to add, that would potentially, mostly be potentially reduced. So there's a couple of things where the 570 that were identified, the 570 that we've had, we're doing another review on those based off of the implementation of the 2025, as well as the '26 CDO awardees and changing market conditions and, and the community partner.
I guess my question is, why are we adding more if we're not finished with the initial 300?
Because this is an iterative, this is, all of this work is not something that we could stand right here and just pull the trigger on at this moment. The work that we're doing in the communities is work that happens for years, and you have to have that strategy, and you have to have that on-ramp, and you have to have that vision for where we're moving next. Because there's components of the work that actually, on those priority blocks, the city might be, it's a priority block for us, and it's in the hands now of our CDO partner to, like, actually do the work on it. But we now then don't need to do this over here, but we have to look at next year's block.
You can add the adjacent block and do start to do the work on that.
Yeah, and what is the next? So you, it is common in strategic planning and, and planning to have that vision that looks out over time so that we have the clear roadmap and so that staff also knows where they're going. That's what has been the key pieces. If I'm, you know, looking at acquisition and I've finished, you know, filing all of my, or requesting all of my appraisals for this, and it's towards the end of the fiscal year, and every appraisal's been acquired and everything's done, now they know which batch to start on next and how to move forward. So it is very much, you need to have kind of that long, forward-thinking planning process in order to get where we are today. We wouldn't be able to get where we are today and have seen the success that we've seen so far if we didn't have some of the planning and if we weren't working on blocks and moving, you know, and adding and refining.
So when we're talking about adding, we're talking about starting that same, like, we're doing the adjacent block and then going, I'm just using that as an example.
Well, sometimes not, because some of the neighborhood...
And then, starting to do the list of, okay, here's, you know, because as I've said, and you've said, you know, every house has its own story. So you literally have to go into all the details about what's going on with that house and plan ahead as to what's going on. So that's when we're adding blocks, it just means that we're moving in that direction with these other blocks. Is that correct?
We're moving in the direction of the other blocks for, for the block-level planning to occur, for the strategies to be identified, for what is the next step and what will need to happen on that block to then get to the whole block outcome. How many acquisitions, demolitions, stabilizations, homeowners needing repair? And it all happens in different times because the homeowners could get repairs now, and, you know, acquisition and, and the rehabs, you know, might not, might still take three years. So it all pulls all of that together.
I do have one more question.
So to give you an idea, Councilwoman Ramos, so, one of the, we, we had this happen in my district where we had the Parkwood RFQ. A block over was not in a, was not in the impact zone, and the community in the adjacent neighborhood said, hey, I have friendly neighborhood pharmacists that we want to get rid of, and then we have a developer who's bought 10 of the properties. And there are three properties that they can't get, the city then worked with that community association and that developer to acquire three properties. We now, once they do the rest of the planning for the RFQ portion for Parkwood, we'll have three blocks that the city has, and then a developer in the community will be working on the block up from it.
Yeah, no, I understand how it would work.
But now, we'll no longer have an entire contiguous five blocks that don't have, that don't have vacancies anymore.
Right. And we have also, I think, done some work, there's an example in my district where one of the blocks that I talk about all the time actually isn't in priority block right now, but hopefully will be in this next, you know, iteration. So I totally get how it works. I just wanted to be clear so that it was clear how this, how this was going to work. I have one more question? Okay. So the, one of the things that has occurred is you, you've been talking about how the, when people are identifying properties that they're interested in and blocks, then we've already, you know, established who the partner might be, then there, it's sort of reserved for them as they go through that process. We've had a couple of instances, one in my district and one that I heard about recently, where...
We've made a mistake.
Somehow, we've made that mistake where it's like we ended up selling it to somebody else.
Yep.
In the case of my district, it was a denial because it was, that didn't make any sense.
And one of the partners here is actually with us today that it's happened to. So we're aware, I mean, it's, it hasn't been something that has happened, there isn't like a rampant, significant information, you know, epidemic of us doing that. But, you know, on that one, I think that there were some paths that crossed, you know, crossed within the notes of, of the property and slate. The team has also been looking at how best, and that's one of the things Deputy Redfern has done with her team, is actually looking at all of the data in slate, how it's entered, reevaluating, you know, with the team in terms of data integrity and making sure that everybody knows exactly which, you know, note to put in the field that makes sure it gets triggered and picked up, to avoid that in the future.
So given these couple of examples, you're starting to think through some of the operational ways to avoid that in the...
Yeah, it's not even these examples, there's just the work of making sure that the data that they're tracking, the input, the data integrity and the data governance is in place across the board. So that's one of the first things that Deputy Redfern started working on. You know, the, the property with NHS just came to our, you know, Deputy Redfern's team has been working on the data governance and the, and the data review and making sure and updates with slate and what can, and what fields to use and how to run those on the reports, going back to actually, within the first two months that she came back to the agency. But this is a more recent item that has come up. But that would be addressed in also the changes that she's making.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that we started that process to look through and make sure that that, those types of things don't happen again. It also caused my community a little bit of heart failure when that happened with our block. So, you know, it wasn't that it was sold, it was just, the application was denied, which didn't make sense because we had already identified, you know, the, that particular partner. So I appreciate that. I'm, thanks, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First question, and the hardest part is remembering what your questions are after everyone kind of asks their question, get your mind going. Just for clarification, I noticed you had a list of number of blocks in each district kind of with the whole block strategy. What qualifies, I guess, as a property or a block to be like a whole block strategy? Just kind of what, what makes it?
So that, that goes back to what I was talking about in the presentation earlier on in terms of the, you know, community plans that we've been working on, the strategic implementation plans, the zones. So we took the city, we created impact investment areas, we also have the vacant, vacant reduction priority geographies, which include like our community asset-building communities. So the work that we've been doing in terms of planning with them, so like, taking Broadway East as an example, in Broadway East, you take the city, you go down to Broadway East, and then in Broadway East, there are multiple different zones.
I guess, just, just for my clarification, what makes it like that houses on that block count towards the whole block strategy? I mean, because I guess you could be working...
Every house on the block.
Oh, yeah, so, so that block counts as...
So that block is the block. Sorry for misunderstanding the question.
Yeah.
That, once it's identified as a block in the, in, you know, as in a zone one, whatever is on that block, so if it is a block that only has one vacant lot on the block, then our strategy on that block is, okay, there's only one vacant lot on that block, what is the plan for that vacant lot? And if we have identified the steward of the vacant lot, are we selling the vacant lot?
Got.
Is it a side lot? Then that one vacant lot, you know, knowing that we were, had a plan, that would be considered, you know, a whole block and a whole block outcome. If we have a block, like I showed in the example, where you started off with 18 VBNs
Yeah, you got to get...
plus a couple of vacant lots, now you're seeing that move to, now there's more homeowners, there's more purple, we still have the five VBNs, so the homeowners have been reached on that block, they've had home repair, they've had facade, we have one more, you know, acquisition for green space at the corner of Loyola Northway, we get those other five renovated, you have a whole block outcome.
Yeah. So I guess, which leads me to my question. So if, if there is a property that has a VBN on it or is, you know, neglected and it doesn't necessarily fall within your whole block strategy atmosphere, what happens to that property that has a VBN, been sitting there all that time, no one's looking, is there no plan to kind of escalate it and move it to the next level? Kind, and it just sits?
No, that's a really good question, and the answer is that, no, it necessarily doesn't sit. It depends, there's a lot of, like, this is a, there's a lot of moving parts and a lot of different components to that property, right? And where it is. There are, you know, we have over 12,000 vacant properties, we are actively working to reduce the number of vacant properties in the city, we've been very successful in that. And, you know, we can't get to every single vacant property immediately, otherwise, we would have done that years ago, or yesterday, or the day before. But we do have and do work on blocks, or we do work on vacant properties that are not on a priority block.
Okay.
Because we are the Department of Housing and Community Development, we do serve the city, and there are opportunities that arise, and there is work that needs to happen to create kind of, you know, betterment for the city in terms of what tool. And then it also depends on what tool in the toolbox we're using in, in that regard.
And, and this kind of touches on the point regarding staffing, my colleague Councilwoman Ramos, who mentioned. It feels like sometimes that unless there's a, it falls within that whole block approach, a house that may be, a property that may be neglected and have a VBN, there isn't an aggressive enough attempt to kind of make something happen, where I appreciate the attention, the intentionality of the whole block approach, and we need to do something now. It would be good to see a dual track while you have those, the ones that necessarily don't fall within, you know, where, where those are still at some, where it may not be as aggressive, but at some level are still being addressed and moved.
And we do have that.
Okay.
I don't think that that exists, it doesn't exist as a dual track. But like I said, this, you know, we are not ignoring everything, it's not like we have blinders on and are only looking at these blocks that we've talked about tonight, you know? We actually are looking at, you know, if you could be inside my brain right now, you could see code map of the entire city, and then you have like all the red dots everywhere and where it's happening. And, you know, the team knows as well, there are often times when, you know, one of my favorite times of the day is Friday, you know, between 4:00 and 6:00 PM, where I'll be in the office sometimes and finding the properties that are not on the priority blocks and seeing where they're popping up in different parts of our communities, and what is the tool in the toolbox that we can use to address those? Because it's like, if, you know, we have to get to this one now, it's going to help prevent other vacancies on the block. Or something comes up and they reach out to Deputy Redfern, and, you know, there's an opportunity because somebody already owns several properties on the block, a developer or like they're looking to do something and they just need another two, well, we could, you know, figure out how to move those. So those conversations happen, and it does work like that.
I, I would just say, I've noticed a few properties in my district that had, that had VBNs for years and nothing that's kind of, you look at the VBN date and what the violations were, and those same violations still exist. And there was no additional citation, no nothing from the last two years since when the VBN was originally put on it. And, and that's, I guess, and when you talk to residents, residents ask questions, what's going on? You can't really give them any kind of notice or update because there hasn't even been an additional sign or a final citation regarding why those VBNs existed. So I would love to work with you on figuring out how we can make sure those are also addressed because I often notice those don't exist within the whole track, whole block method. My, my other question is regarding the LDA compliance, yes. When you have LDAs, is there a set timeline on, well, first off, when you look at the LDA compliance, it looked like FY '25 was 27.5%, and FY '26 was 19.4%. I haven't done much work in, in this field, but like those numbers don't seem that great to me. I feel like within two years... I feel like within two years, for someone to have a property, at least they've received from the city, anything even under 50% would be, is bad. So, look at numbers like 19 and 27%. I think we have to do much better at this. And I think part of it is the LDA compliance. I think we have an issue in the city where people buy properties from the private market and sit and hold on to them and do nothing with them. I think that is a problem we have in the city and we can also be a part of that problem. If anybody has to be the stickler to set the standard, it has to be the city. And if we're allowing people to sit and hold on to properties three, four years, five years without getting used in occupancy, we're just as bad as those who are doing it. And I think there should be a sense of anxiety where if you do get a property from the city, you need to do what you have to do or else there will be consequences. So, I guess my question is, LDAs, is there a set amount of time that a developer does have in order to finish a property? How often is an extension done? And on average, how long does it take? And how frequently are we leveraging our powers in these LDAs to get this property back if people aren't moving on?
Deputy Redfern will address this one.
So, the average amount of time for an LDA is 12 months, right? And so, that is usually if it's one property, maybe at the most five. Once we start to sell more properties, the LDA time can extend because we recognize that the developer will need more time to move through all the properties to be successful.
Absolutely.
Right? So, part of the issue that we're dealing with, we do the work on the front end to make sure that we have a good development partner, right? We do our best to make sure that they're going to be successful by doing the vetting that we talked about earlier, right? The larger amount of property, or if it's an RFP, the more vetting we do for that budget so that we can make sure, or do our best to make sure that someone is going to be successful. What happens once we transfer the property, right? We have limited tools, to be honest, right? Once we transfer the property, we have limited tools to move quickly to what is the next step. One of the tools is to recapture the property. In order to recapture the property, it has to be free of any encumbrances. But we know, in order to do this work, you have to get some type of resource or finance, often which encumbers the property. So, if we were to recapture the property, we would take it with everything in place, meaning that we would then be liable for whatever encumbrances on the property. We could file receivership, but we do, what we do most often is to try to check in with the development partner early and often. That's why we have the compliance team that checks at least every three months to see where they are, right? It's what I'm trying to convey to you, that it is also a market dynamic that is happening, that we have to pay attention to. We are doing what we can to move the needle forward. But we have to also, I think, recognize that there, in order for us to take the property back, we may have a certain amount of liability that I don't know that we are ready to take on.
I guess I would question, how many of those properties have that liability on them? Because my thing is, yeah, unless we act like, I think, at what point do we realize? I think in order to find out whether or not there's additional lien or something on a property, we have to start the process. And how often is the process started in order for us to get that information?
So, we do compliance on every property that goes through the disposition process. It starts, the timeline is in your packages, I believe. But it starts three months out and we check, then from, we continue to track until we have a use in occupancy permit. If we are unable to get a use in occupancy permit, we make a referral to our legal section to file what we call as a reverter, right? Want to recapture the property. But right now, we're focusing on NREM because we know that we have properties that we need to get site control to, right? In order to move the whole block strategy forward. So, some of it is capacity, but we are doing the work on our end. It's just we have to figure out, and this is an area where we can stand to be more creative and think about what other tools might be in place or we can put in place. But I just want to make it clear that it is difficult once we sell the property, right? But we can, we do our best to move forward.
I would be interested in figuring out the certain properties, whether or not that exist on them and how much that is. Because while we're giving them time, I think it hurts the community and it hurts the resident who has to live next to it. And I think if we're going to put timelines in place in these LDAs, they have to mean something. Whether or not someone put a lien on it or not. I meant, like, then if that's the case, then we just...
But we have to play out the next steps, right? So, we would have to, if either we recapture the property, or we file receivership, or we file condemnation. All of those processes take at least another 12 months. It is quite the dilemma that we're in. But I wanted to just make the point that we are intentional, once we sell a property, about following up to see if we've gotten an outcome.
Just last thing, Chair, just wanted...
I was trying to clarify something. It's a committee request.
Oh, okay. And I'm going to let you clarify. I get capacity and you mentioned NREM and how a lot of that, receivership and stuff and how...
What tools we have, once we've sold it.
Yeah, yeah. No, I was speaking of being able to start the process in order to receive the property back. And oftentimes, because of capacity, is no need even starting this sometimes because we're focused on NREM and trying to get receivership on those.
Yeah, we're doing NREM on those. But what I'm saying is we are balancing the work that we try to do.
Yeah, no, no.
And so, are we going to take another year to get the property back that we sold? Or we're going to try to sell additionally?
I'll just challenge the thought of, I get balancing it, but maybe one of the most important parts of the work that we're doing is this accountability on the backend. Because if we do NREM and get all these properties and then get them in the hands of folks and then they don't do anything with them.
Yeah, I understand.
You know, like, I feel like that is...
As the people who have to do all the work, we are committed to finding out if there's an outcome on the end.
Exactly, on the outcome. I think the outcome is the most important part that I say, like, because all the work that I watch you all put in on the front end to get the property and get an acquisition and find someone who qualified and get it in their hands. And the most important part is just making sure we get that last part, use in occupancy. And I think whatever we can do to lean more into making sure that that happens, that makes the entire process work or else we're just trying to pass the buck off and kind of say it's not, it's not on us.
Sure, absolutely. Not passing the buck.
So, I would...
Mr. Chair, real quick, before, because I know Commissioner Kennedy wants to make a couple of clarifications. For the public that might be watching this, right? I want to be clear, what the city is not doing is just passing these properties off just for us to say, oh, there's one less city on vacant, right? Like, we're not doing that. And we're not seeing a windfall of a need, and I just kind of talked to the commissioner about that just now, of a need to pull properties back from folks, right? If we need to, we will. But that just furthers, signals the agency's commitment to making sure that when we do give somebody a property, however that transaction happens, that we are serious. And I think that's what Deputy Commissioner Redfern was saying. We will hold you accountable to the fact that the entire purpose of that is to return that property to productive use. So, I don't want anybody to misconstrue or for the public to walk away from this thinking that we're just transferring properties and saying, well, we know you said you would re, you know, do some work on it, but here's another year, right? We're not doing that. If the need comes where, you know, we need to do receivership or whatever needs to happen to pull a property back because somebody is not filing an LDA, then that will happen. But the other part of it is, you don't just get these properties and redo development overnight, right? These things take time. So, while I understand that there's a concern that, well, somebody may get a property, but then folks still are living next to us because of there's a process behind the work that needs to be done. Folks have to secure capital, folks have to secure the proper permits, right? Like, there are things that have to happen. So, I just, I want to clarify that because I don't want anybody to think that we're seeing this windfall of properties that we're transferring to external stakeholders and we're having to recall them back. Or I forget the actual term.
To reverter.
Revert them back to the city. That's not happening. Thank you.
So, I will say for the next oversight hearing, let's have a conversation about the decision-making around reverting. One, give an example of what the encumbrance would look like. Because I don't envy you because if someone is encumbered with $200,000 in lien of debt from an actual lender, that's a different conversation because it's attached to the house, right? Everything becomes attached to the property, even when we file an NREM things. We are attaching, we're talking about the property, not the person. I would say that we would need examples of each decision-making tree for reverting, whether it be through receivership, NREM, condemnation, all, the whole gambit. But also, I think one of the things is that we should think about exploring is just a suggestion, is potentially working with our financial institutions about if we can hold deeds in escrow too. So, that if we did, if we can hold deeds in escrow with preferred financial institutions about how we, if they want to foreclose and we can find somebody else that actually take the property from them, we can start working together with our financial institutions to get that property back up and running. Because ultimately, they have a claim against the person, probably have insurance on it anyway. How do we then get that property in productive use? But work with them because they have more means than we do to actually file the case. And it's not something that we're burdened with. So, I think I'm happy to help problem solve and think that through because there's a lot of bank-owned properties and we can help them with getting rid of them too. So, I think that we need to think more strategically around that. And is there any other questions?
Yeah, just last clarification. Because I just, maybe I'm just hopeful that the amount of responsibility on some of these properties isn't as high as some of us may think. Because I know there are processes banks take and make as far as giving draws out slowly so that the number doesn't balloon to like $200,000 on a property that's only worth, you know, X amount. They aren't necessarily giving the entire lump sum to folks. So, I just don't want that to be, the fear of a large number. Be us not as aggressive in holding folks accountable to doing what they said they were going to do. And it wasn't my intention to create the perception that we were just giving out properties and just saying, we're done with them. But when I look at just the numbers of 27.5 and 19.4% of the folks who had properties for two years, still haven't received a use in occupancy. It's just, that's what I, that's what I was looking at. And that's what made me ask the question because I see the progress that happens in my district. And if there's opportunity to do better and to increase that process and make it happen quicker, I just want to lean in and figure out what we can do to work together to make sure that that happens.
Also, as Deputy Commissioner Redfern and I were just also wanting, this is that, you know, period of time. So, that isn't, you know, a long period of time. The other piece that I just want to highlight is that, you know, we do have partners that we work with that the property is disposed. And the, you know, in order to help them achieve what's needed for a whole block outcome or other component, we've done the LDA, we've gone, they've gone to settlement so that they can show that they have site control to then be able to work through financing. And then that takes a little bit of a different time. So, we have a number of properties actually with some of our top performing partners in the development world where, yes, they have not received a use in occupancy permit and it's been over 700 days. But that's because of other components and other financing pieces and having part of our city financing or another state piece come into the project to move it forward. So, I think that, you know, we absolutely, this is one reason why we like revamped and reimagined over the last two years, the compliance team and their processes and what they've been doing. And so, in no way, shape or form are we, you know, wanting there to be a property that we sold in 2025 sitting that is still vacant in, you know, 2030.
Councilwoman Ramos.
Yeah, I had a question about the, thank you, Mr. Chair, the Buy and To Be More website. It still has properties on it that are not owned by the city. And my understanding is that the Buy and To Be More is where we're posting the properties that you are selling. You're not putting everything on there because of strategic reasons. But I'm not quite understanding still why we're putting properties on, for instance, I don't want to say properties on, in public, but one of the property I'm looking at right now that isn't owned by the city, but it's designated for Charm City Roots. Charm City Roots is a program that, you know, would be, that's something that maybe there's a family member tied to that might be interested in that property. And then we would work through the NREM process in most cases to get that. But in that case, that's like every vacant property. So, I'm not quite sure why it's here.
That's where they would put the application in for that property.
Yeah, but, I mean, like literally not every vacant property is here on this map.
There are, no, the Charm City Roots eligible properties are on that map. So, we have properties on Buy and To Be More that are not owned by the city that are specific to Charm City Roots in order, you know, for those properties.
I mean, this is a small town. There's families that are going to be attached to all kinds of different properties that would like to be able to get possession back. And so, wouldn't we instead say, people who want to, who might have thought they lost Auntie's house, you know, come to us and with the address and tell us that you want to do this? Rather than going on to Buy and To Be More to apply because A, it could be any property and B, it's confusing to anybody who wants to actually purchase a property that's from the city. You'd think that that would be the only thing on the Buy and To Be More website.
Well, it also includes, the Buy and To Be More also includes, we have on there also our water as well as Adopt-A-Lot.
Yeah, and then also the tax sale properties are on here that I think are the former vendor lien, former vendor lien, right? That's what that is.
No, no, no. Those are tax sales certificates.
Right, that haven't been, that haven't been sold.
Correct.
Right, right. So, that's a whole separate program. So, I think there's some clarity here so that people aren't completely confused. But also, I think the Charm City Roots idea is a good one and it should be blasted out saying, hey, if you've got a connection with this property, you know, that might be something that it could be interested. Now, some people aren't going to be able to be qualified to be, because if you don't have the money, you're not going to get the property. So...
We have had some contact us that weren't qualified or needed further assistance. And we have made those referrals to some of the different partners for coaching or other work in order to get them prepared for that process.
Question, I feel my understanding of the Charm City Roots that were on your website were estates that had a personal representative, so...
Nope.
Oh.
But Deputy Redfern, you can't see her because, but she was saying that it would be something to think through and that's something that you're interested in doing. Okay, great, yeah. So, we'll talk more about that. Thank you.
Any more question, colleagues? Perfect. We will now move to public testimony. We're only six minutes behind. Thank you. First, I have, I believe this is Asa Desire.
Good evening, Council. My name is Asa Desire. I go to Mervo High School, also known as Mergantella Vocational Technical High School. I'm in, yes, I am the, I'm in the 11th grade and I am here to publicly testify for a project in my first period class. It is an advocacy project and my speech is about a bill that I made in Youth and Government that Councilman James Torrance knows about. And the bill has been pretty much two years in the making. I have made it, refined it, and I believe it to be a great thing that I want to present with you all. Let it be known that the bill was originally made for a state bill. But I have tried to, me and my group members have tried to make it similar to the city's bill instead, or C ordinance, as it may be called. And we are still attempting to go through that refining process. But I'm giving my speech. Good morning, councilmembers, community leaders and fellow residents. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak today. I want to begin by asking everyone in the chamber to think about the place we call home. Think about the neighborhoods that raised us, the blocks that where our families built their lives and the streets where our city's history still echoes. Now imagine those same places, empty windows boarded, porches collapsing and signs where children once played. For many of us, that image is not hypothetical, is our lived reality. Vacant and abandoned properties have spread across Baltimore like a snow-moving storm, draining the life from our communities, one house at a time. But I am here today because I believe deeply that this crisis does not define us. But I am here today because I believe deeply that this crisis does not define us. Instead, it presents us with a moment, a moment to decide whether, whether we decline, continue, or we take the steps needed to restore our strength of neighborhoods. This crisis reminds you of the Tree of Heaven, a vicious species that once cut down or grows back stronger and more spreads more further, I have in here. When it grows in the most toughest and neglected places. When vacant and abandoned properties behave the same way. When they are ignored, patched over, or handled with short-term fixes, the problem does not disappear, it multiplies. One vacant house becomes three, three becomes a whole block. A single neglected sugar, a single neglected structure becomes the spark for more instability and families leaving the city. The city. Just like the Tree of Heaven, this issue roots itself deep into the foundation of our neighborhoods. And unless we respond with coordinated treatment, enforcement, and rehabilitation, and long-term planning, it will regenerate faster than we can cut it down. But when we confront it directly, and we treat the roots instead of trimming the branches, we stop the spread. We reclaim the space, and we make room for growth that strengthens, strengthens the community rather than overwhelms it. That is why the Baltimore Vacant and Abandoned Property, Properties Ordinance, or Act, is so important. This ordinance gives Baltimore the tools we need to take control of our housing landscape. It establishes a city vacant property registry, giving us accurate, accurate information over ownership, tax status, and safety conditions. It requires property owners to register vacant buildings and take responsibility for maintaining, maintaining, or rehabilitating them. It empowers Baltimore agencies to inspect unsafe structures, issue violations, repair, require repairs, or remove structures that threaten public safety. Most importantly, it creates a city rehabilitation and reinvestment fund, ensuring that the money collected from penalties and surcharges is reinvested directly back into Baltimore's communities. Renting vacant homes, supporting first-time home buyers, demolishing damaged structures, and transforming abandoned lots into gardens, green spaces, and affordable housing sites. This ordinance, or bill, is not about punishment, it's about restoration. It is about turning forgotten properties into opportunities for stability, safety, and community growth. Councilmembers, imagine a Baltimore where abandoned houses become homes again. Imagine empty lots becoming places where families gather, where food is grown, and where children play again. Imagine a city where every block reflects possibility instead of decline. We have the chance to make that vision real, but it requires action. It requires commitment, and it requires belief in the strength of Baltimore's people. Baltimore is ready, our neighborhoods are ready, and together, we can ensure that our scene not only grows back, but grows back stronger. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Asa, and I just want to say, it was great meeting you two weeks ago, but also, it warms my heart, because I am a former youth and government student and advisor. Um, and to give you a little motivation, the Office of Returning Citizens, which I passed in this council, was thought about in when I was 16 years old, and, and as a member of youth and government. So I commend you for being here today to present an idea, because it was, and I remember the history of Maryland Youth and Government, where the yellow line that's on our highway was thought about by a student in Howard County that was then pitched to a legislator and the General Assembly, and now we have yellow lines along all our highways. And that went on to be a standard across multiple states. So please continue to send us your ideas, because as a person who was 38 years old, I don't know everything. And I am willing to learn, but also take ideas to implement for you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll have Dan Ellis.
Good afternoon, thank you, Chairman Torrance and members of the committee. I'm Dan Ellis, I'm the CEO of Neighborhood Housing Services of Baltimore. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I wanted to, first of all, begin by saying thank you to Commissioner Kennedy and her team for their work and their thoughtfulness around putting together whole block strategies. And I'd like to suggest that we might want to think about expanding our language and our thinking around what whole blocks are, to be more whole neighborhoods than whole blocks. Because sometimes when we think about whole blocks, we end up with outcomes like you talked about earlier, Councilman Torrance, and that you saw years ago in Sandtown, where the surrounding area is not addressed. So as we think about this work, and our work is primarily in West Baltimore in the 7th District, and as we think about the work that we do, in the neighborhood of Panway and Walbrook, where we've been working for the last two and a half years, when we started working in the neighborhood, our goal was not that we do every single house. Our goal is that we set the market and catalyze the market, so that it's able to bring about outcomes that are beneficial for the community, and so that the market begins to work to actually help people, help move houses to homeownership. And we've seen in that neighborhood, when we started a two-bed, or two, two-story row house was about $189,000 renovated, today it's over $300,000. And the market is beginning to take the vacant houses that are in, remaining in the neighborhood, and to reduce them. That was a neighborhood when we started that had 9% vacancy. The area where we're working now has about 25% vacancy. It takes a different approach, and that approach is, is we need to do the vast majority of the houses on the block in order to bring about an outcome. So as we think about whole blocks, I suggest we think more about whole neighborhoods, because if you do, if you have a, a block with eight, with 18 vacant houses, I think Loyola Northway was a good example that the commissioner used, it has a whole block outcome. There are really positive things that have happened up there, and it's not finished, but yet there's a lot of great things that are happening. And so it's looking at it holistically from multiple lenses to be able to do that. The other piece that is critical, well, I'll address it later. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next is, I believe is Andrew Pataki.
Oh, no worries. Sorry, I didn't want to give you that heart attack. Next is Victor.
Good evening, councilmembers, my name is Victor Akonabi, Director of Rebirth Development, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, I'd like to open up by saying first, uh, thank you to the council, and of course to DHCD for, uh, looking at whole block outcome, whole block strategies. There are myriad of tools that we're using as a developer in order to get the job done. And that job in particular was the 2600 block of Loyola Northway. So, uh, that was done, of course, in partnership, a heavy partnership with DHCD, and the tools that they use, like receivership, to actually help assemble and bundle the properties together, and then working with the CDO, which is Park Heights Renaissance, uh, and then, of course, getting the properties, uh, into our hands. Uh, and of course, sir, I wanted to touch on, uh, the topic that you brought up, which is the disposition of the properties. And I do want to say that the city, the city council, the mayor, everybody is doing everything that they can, but there's another half to this story, which is the developer, right? So Baltimore deserves a better developer, right? A very high-end developer, like Alice said, or Commissioner Kennedy said, I'm sorry, uh, which is, you know, the best of the best, effectively, right? So I always kind of talk about the military, you've got the Army, the Air Force, then you got the Marines, you know? Or you've got police, and then you've got SWAT, right? You know, or you've got the fire department, you've got rescue squads, right? So, uh, effectively, I know there's a developer registry, but I think it's on us, as the developer community, to do a better job, attack houses more aggressively, finish out those LDAs, hold title companies accountable, et cetera, et cetera. So the city, of course, can keep approaching and plowing its resources into it, which is absolutely correct, but again, we have to meet you at the other side, and that includes meeting you with good construction and use and occupancy permits. So, uh, from, from a Darley Park perspective, so we're steadily, uh, we're, we're kind of starting the process over. So we finished 2600 Loyola Northway, and now we're on Normal Avenue, Cliffwood, and, and a few other, uh, streets there. Oops, sorry, so I guess I'll finish it later, but, uh, thank you so much for everything that you're doing.
Thank you, Shiel Seltzer.
Just want to remind the lobbyists, you have four days to register as lobbyists. I did this, I have delivered this three years ago. Okay, my name is Shiel Seltzer, I live in Liberty Square, approximately 84% renters. Um, this whole block's plan is a farce. It's a way for, uh, developers, um, to get city money to build and be able to leave, and that there is no plan for global crisis. There is no such thing as a housing crisis. What we have here is a climate crisis. Nobody wants to live in flood zone, nobody wants to live in increased tornado zones, and seawalls fail, and that's the only plan that Mayor Scott has in regards to climate crisis, as he drives around his 174,000 gas-guzzling SUV. You ever heard of the term sponge city? Because I've said it before, and I've explained it before, but show of hands, who knows what a sponge city is? Nobody.
Shiel, you can only address the councilmembers, not the audience.
A sponge city was coined by Professor Kungwon Yu, who does state that seawalls fail. A sponge city is a permeable city that is built, ironically, the only area I've seen that's permeable is the area around the grass in front of the city hall. It's where you have, water can get through and go into the ground. The way that we've been building cities of moving all the water is, is wrong. It's absolutely wrong.
You have 30 seconds to wrap up, please.
He has... No, you gave a lot of time to the student.
I did, I gave him 30 seconds beyond the time. I just want to give you the same, I just want to extend you the same courtesy.
So this whole blocks is of, of, for, um, allied entities to take complete control over whole blocks and whole areas. The only peop, the only, see, it's just all fragmented. You all need to hear me, so please give me more time. You stole my time last time. Please give me two more minutes.
No, ma'am, I have to be fair to everyone that's in this room in fair.
You're not being fair. He, he read a whole big bill thing. He had five minutes.
Yes, ma'am, I actually watched the clock, and he went 30 seconds beyond that clock. I'm going into...
Habitat for the Ha, Habitat for Humanity International is the only entity that can solve the problems of Baltimore, because they know how to build net-zero homes, they know how to teach people. The whole plan that I have there, the diagram, is to move people out of poverty, which we have 25% people in poverty, be able to buy, build their own ho, homes, be able to have a vocational school where people learn how to do metal roofs, how to, how to assemble air-to-water heat pumps. We have to get off of gas, and nobody, nobody is doing, everybody is doing gas. Habitat for Humanity Chesapeake, Neighborhood Housing Services, et cetera, et cetera. This is not a plan for the future. This is a plan of destruction of Baltimore City, giving developers billions of dollars, and they will leave.
Thank you.
We must deal with the infrastructure first.
Ms. Seltzer, your time's up. Thank you. Is there anyone, Lord Jesus, turn the thing off. Is there anyone present that would like to provide public testimony? We're now switch to online to see if anyone is interested in public testimony. If you're online, please use the raise hand function, so that we can provide you opportunity to testify. If you do not, then we will assume that, that no one wants to provide online testimony. With that, oh, I see two people are staff, and possibly two Williams. I see no raise hand function. With that being said, Commissioner Kennedy and staff, thank you for presenting tonight. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and we are in adjournment.